Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Call the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. At this point, we'll move on to item number three, public comments. Is there any public comments? State your name and address, the record coming up to the microphone, please, Mr. Brennan.
James Brennan, 124 Bungee Road. I'm here tonight to encourage the board to try and get a person in place in the wetlands enforcement office. I went today trying to get some paperwork to get on the agenda. I was told by Bob Lucker, I was hoping that he could still around till the end of the month. I told him he's gone. And I asked Bob how I would drop off, get some information for inland, wetlands, or application or whatever. And he said he did not know how. There's no one doing that at this time.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Is there any other public comment? Hearing no public comment, we'll move on to item number four, approved minutes from the June 2nd, 2015, regular meeting, have a motion to do so.
Second.
Motion by Ann Marie, second by Karen, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Next item on the agenda, item number five, approved minutes from June 3rd, 2015, ordinance committee meeting, have a motion to do so.
Second.
Motion by Nicole, second by Karen, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Next item on the agenda, item number six, first selectman's report, I have just had a short report for tonight, but wanted to give you an update on the budget as the current projections stand. As I had mentioned before, we are running a small surplus for fiscal year 2015. This small surplus will be used to offset the fund balance transfer that was made during the winter months to cover the additional money needed for snowplow overtime and material. This will reduce the use of fund balance to about $65,000. This does not take into account the potential liability we will need to absorb for the workers' comp claims for the Board of Education. At this point, they are trending about $300,000 above budget. I expect to have a more concrete number at our first meeting in July. Work on the creation of the joint grounds and maintenance department with the Board of Education is continuing. I hope to have an outline for review by this board at some point in July. I am continuing conversations regarding the regional approach to our animal shelter. To date, we've had discussions with Woodbridge, Woodbury, Shelton, and at the Nogatuck Valley Council of Governance. I'll be meeting with Mayor Loretty in the next week or two to hopefully finalize a plan to present to this board to allow us to work with Shelton going forward. Mayor Loretty is very open to the idea, but still needs to have some details worked out. And the chief elected boards of both communities also need to weigh in on the plan. Attended or took part in several events over the last two weeks, including the Seymour Pink Golf Tournament, Career Day at Bungee School, Junior Achievement Valley Recognition Breakfast, the Bungee School Fifth Grade Class Day, Boys and Girls Club, Seymour Satellite Annual Awards Night, the monthly NVCog meeting, and a fundraiser for the Seymour Police Department K-9 Program. Finally, I made the decision to move the graduation ceremony back to the high school football field. I did not make this decision lightly and sought the input of many people prior to making the decision. I do understand that there are people who disagree with the decision, but I thought it was what in the best interest of the community as a whole, and the few days lost would not affect the final outcome of the project. So that closes the first selectman's report. Item number seven, action in lieu of special town meeting regarding appropriating $2 million for design and construct of an artificial turf athletic field and grant standard at Seymour High School, AKA Project C SAP 2015-17 and related improvements and amenities to be funded in part by an estimated $1,895,000 in grants from the state of Connecticut DEEP. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Thank you for not making me read that. Okay, motion by Nicole, second by Paul, is there any further discussion?
All right, is this the last time we're voting on this thing?
I hope so. Doug Gillett seems to finally be happy, so.
Seems like it's been on the agenda for the past 15 weeks.
We've had it several times now. So, anything else?
It's passed every time.
It's passed multiple times. It's passed unanimous every time, so. Okay, if there's no other comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Next item, item number eight, discussion, take possible action regarding turf bleachers and track resurfacing bids. I was just handed a letter by our, the cheerwoman of our turf committee to the board of selectmen. At our regular meeting on May 21st, 2015, the Seymour High School Athletic Field Committee voted to approve the recommendations of project engineer Nafus and Young for the contractor for the turf. Nafus and Young's recommendation was for Field Turf Revolution in the amount of $474,141.97, the apparent low bidder for the project. Therefore, the Seymour High School Athletic Field Committee recommends that the Board of Selectmen award the bid to, for the turf, to Field Turf Revolution in the amount of $474,141.97. Can I have a motion to accept the turf committee's recommendation as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Len.
Second.
Karen. Yeah, Karen.
Oh, second.
Thank you. Motion by Len, second by Karen, is there any discussion? Jim, anything you'd like to add? Okay, there's no other questions or comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Are there any other issues that need to be addressed for turf at this point, before we move on to the next item?
If you have a, rather lengthy, other four, um, of bleachers, um, if you'd like, I can read all of the results if you want, I can summarize them.
Uh, it's okay if it's summarized, all right, okay, go ahead, Jim.
Okay, we opened bids for the bleachers a couple of weeks ago.
No, she sneezed.
That was a mouth.
Yeah.
There were, there were two bids, E&amp;D Specialties and Dan Clayton were the two contractors to bid. E&amp;D Specialties bid $370,000 even, Dan Clayton bid $370,000, $370,002. Because they did, because E&amp;D was the lowest bidder, we recommended to the committee that the award we bid, uh, the bid be awarded to, or they're subject to our evaluation of their bid in comparison to the, the specifications. Through our investigation, we found that they did not meet the, uh, the bid specifications. And so therefore, in the meeting today, we recommended that the award we bid, that the bid be awarded, look at that.
Yeah.
The bid be awarded to Dan Clayton in the amount of $370,092 because they're, uh, so they don't meet the, the bid specifications. And we felt it was in the town's best interest to let them hear us to vote for better.
Worst case scenario, the state could say you didn't go with the low bidder, and we would be responsible for the difference in $92. Yeah, I was gonna say.
Chip in.
Yeah. Okay, so the, um, the committee took action?
Yes, they did.
Okay.
For record, we have the, uh, the three voting to recommend to the board of selectmen to award the bid to Dan Clayton in, uh, $370,092.
Okay.
Subject to, um, you know, the, uh, the, uh.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Jim? Rich, anything you'd like to add?
No.
Okay.
Sure.
My, my understanding was that when the bleachers were removed, they were going, going to leave the concrete. I was up there today, and there's no concrete left.
No, they're not, they're not leaving the concrete. In, in the early evaluation, we looked at whether leaving the concrete, putting a new deck in all the concrete was an option. It was a physical option. However, um, because of the age of the piers and the seasoning over the years, the new bleachers would have been, was kind of like that. And we felt that, you know, given the fact that it was caused by the project, it would have just, uh,
So the, the price that you're giving us includes the concrete and the lumber?
All, all.
Okay, okay.
Well, I don't think there's any wood, right? It's all metal?
They're metal.
Well, which bleachers are wood? Then you should have a similar removal.
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay, no, yeah, the metal bleachers.
All of the new bleachers and closed bleachers, because you have keys and, and cell phones and cameras and those types of things, when you drop them, they don't fall underneath.
So these are like Ansonia's bleachers, if you've sat in Ansonia. An actress, definitely. Okay, any other questions for Jim? Okay, at this point, then, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the turf committee and award the bid for the bleachers in the amount of $370,092 to Dan Clayton, subject to DEEP approval of the bid.
So moved.
Motion by Karen, second by Len, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. That closes everything for turf? Okay, item number nine, discussion, take possible action regarding road contract bids. So we have a couple more bids to go through, so we'll.
You skipped eight.
That was eight.
That, yeah.
We just finished eight.
I have discussion to take possible action regarding damage. Robert Melissano.
Vincent Melissano.
You have the old agenda.
Yeah, I got the old one too.
I have the old one too, then.
Here comes the new one, Jim is, Jim is also a delivery.
Gonna put it for.
We just put things in, in different order, so Jim can get out.
I better check the bill.
Yeah, Jim's gonna, Jim's gonna put this on his bill, you know that.
Yeah, exactly. We wanted to keep Jim from one, two, and three, so that, that's absolutely Rory's fault, so he apologizes tremendously for that. Okay, item number eight, discussion, take possible action regarding road contract bids. All right, so we'll call Jim up in a minute, but we have a few bids, nine, excuse me, nine. So the first one, Dear Mr. Miller, Nafus and Young opened bids for the hot-in-place reclaiming of asphalt of various roads in the town of Seymour on Thursday, April 22nd, 2015. We did this one, didn't we?
I wasn't sure.
No, this is a different one, so, you know, I'll go through it, and if nothing else, we're just reapproving it. The low bidder is Highway Rehabilitation Corporation with a bid of $448,700. We have reviewed their bid and found it to be in conformance with the content document. Therefore, Nafus and Young Engineers Incorporated recommends award of the bid for hot-in-place reclaiming in the amount of $448,700 to Highway Rehabilitation Corporation. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me, signed, James Gallagher. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to award contracts, 2014 road program contract one to Highway Rehabilitation Corporation in the amount of $448,700 as recommended by Town Engineers Nafus and Young. Motion by Ann Marie. Second by Nicole, is there any discussion? No, the plan says 2014. Yeah. Because when the plan was put together, it was 2014.
How are these bids coming in, in what was expected, Jim?
The, um, that bid was $52,000.
Any other questions or comments for Jim?
Do we have a plan that is $52,000 said?
We'll get to that later on in the agenda. Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. I received a letter as well, says, Dear Mr. Miller, the town of Seymour opened bids for the 2014 Road Reconstruction Project Contract Number Five for the above referenced project. On Tuesday, June 16th, 2015, there were two bidders, A&amp;J Construction at $743,746, and Cochiol Pavilion Incorporated at $828,335. The low bidder is A&amp;J Construction with a bid of $743,746. This office has reviewed the bids and found that the bid submitted by A&amp;J Construction, and it complies with the bid documents. Therefore, this office recommends award of the reference project to A&amp;J Construction in the amount of $743,746. Signed, James Gallagher, Town Engineer. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to award 2014 Road Reconstruction Project Contract Number Five to A&amp;J Construction in the amount of $743,746 as recommended by Town Engineer Nafus and Young.
So moved.
Motion by Paul, second by Ann Marie, is there any discussion?
Again. Under. It will be.
Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Jim, if you could, I asked Jim to put together what everyone should have had passed out to you this evening, and the handouts that Rory just additional. I asked Jim just to give us an update as to where we stand with, um, the road projects themselves. I, like you, would hope that all this would get going a little bit quicker, but, you know, a lot of this is slated for July and August, so I asked Jim just to kind of give us a quick update, so Jim, if you could.
Yes, um, as, as we were voted on tonight, contract one, the, uh, the hot-in-place, we had, you know, the new claim is scheduled for the second half of August, that's to be followed by ONG, ONG will kind of put a process over on that, on that, and that's, uh, that's just an overlay process, it'll take a couple of weeks. Contract two is going to be ready, ready for bidding next week. Um, the, that area takes, includes New Street, Coast Street, more out of those areas there. Uh, that project, you know, drainage is going to be installed first, and the water company is going to come in and do their improvements, that they have to replace a, an aged six inch line of the little bathing line in that area. They'll do that work, and then once that work is complete, then, uh, the reclaim will be effective in those areas that we, uh, that we can do as well. So drainage piping on Chickeny Lane, which is contract three, started today, um, they, uh, they're, they're usually probably done within, uh, what, four or six weeks. Um, they're gonna jump from Chickeny Lane, which is the Robbenboll area, number of the winter plant, Robbenboll area, they have real lot problems with the roads. But we will be the mayor over to, uh, to Glendale, and then over to.
Here.
Bungee extension, and then, and then go over to, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh. Contract four will be the next one to be, uh, doing up a bid after the contract two, and, uh, contract five is, uh, issue in the, uh, night. The contractor for contract five is ready to go, he's, uh, already, uh, securing funds and insurance.
Okay, so any questions or comments for Jim?
So you said this will start in August? I mean, July?
Yeah, heat and place for start in August. Um, contract, uh, three is starting right now, contract, I'm sorry, contract five is starting right now, contract three will start, I don't know, contract, yeah, contract three is, is, is in construction now. Contract five will start right after the first.
Contract two, you had mentioned that the water company is going to be doing some work prior to our startup. Are they on target that you're aware of?
They, they have some schedule today, they're just waiting for us to get them to go out to, uh, go in. That contract there has been set up sort of the New Street and Coast Street first, and then there's so a lot of those in that contract, you'll, uh, do the rest of our work in those areas, while the water company is working on doing, and then come back and do the reclaim work.
And, and overall, are we, are we on target as we projected to finish phase, I believe this is phase two of the road program?
This is, uh, category B.
I'm sorry, category B.
Being into sealed.
Yeah, I'd like to be proud of one at this right now, because the venture of the survey is a little bit small, but, uh, what I'm doing is, is opening up the contract locations to try and get them to finish up with the other one.
Okay.
But, Len, just to answer your question, once we see where we stand after all this is done, we can then go back and look at any road and see, at that point, ask Jim to reach out to the contractors, put in change orders, and make any changes that we want, as long as it's a listed road in category C. Maiden Lane is listed in category C. Yes, yes. So right now, Jim, we're about $70,000 below estimate. Okay. All right, any other questions, comments for Jim? Rich, anything you'd like to add? Okay. With that, we'll close item number nine, and we'll move on to item number 10, discussion, take possible action regarding Maiden Lane. There was a request made to put some consideration into Maiden Lane, and Jim gave us two quick summaries, one, kind of a massive overtaking and redoing of the entire road, and then one, a more short-term type approach to allow folks at least to make the road passable and things like that. A lot of what we could do is going to be based on the savings overall of this program, so Jim, you want to just give us a quick update?
Yes, um, I looked into, uh, the, uh, the reclaim and repaving options we've been using on several of the roads in town. I figure that that's probably going to run to about $70,000 to do the surface part. As you remember, I estimated about $100,000 to do all of the work. What I'm proposing to do or thinking about doing right now is using, uh, infiltrators and undergrounds to try and take care of some of the rock. As you know, Maiden Lane is, is about 1,500 feet, it's got several dips in it, and there's no outlets for drainage, but, uh, except for to come on across the, uh, the, the road. Rather than trying to ease this and complicate the area, and that problem, we're looking to try and do some infiltrators in that area. That whole section of town is, is just a, uh, gravel. And so, uh, we're looking to try and conserve all of the money, trying to maybe, uh, make a better drainage work and all this stuff.
A fix like this, designed obviously to be short-term, because we know there's a lot of problems there. What's the length of time we're buying? Just ballpark?
I, I think that it is a few reclaim and repave of it, and, uh, the, the finished product is going to look like that.
Okay.
The one thing is you don't get out of it is the cul-de-sac at the end. So that would be something you would look to try and do at a future. If, if, that goes, with the new claim and repave of it, that goes in the last fifteen minutes.
Okay.
It'll be, even though the width is not as wide as it should be?
Yeah, that's gonna be the problem, you know, you're, you're, there isn't any demand to make it to the surface.
Right. Okay. Len, questions, or anyone questions for Jim?
As far as paving, uh, paving for, um.
And we just discussed the potential $70,000 savings over what we had anticipated in the previous iteration of this plan. Would that, is that anticipated to be, uh, to be used towards this project?
Uh, that would be the decision of the seven of us, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess, no, so Jim, and correct me if I'm wrong, we would need to have that decision made for August? If it was going to be the heat and place?
Yeah, we, we will not be in the heat and place, if they're not eligible for heat and place.
Okay, I misunderstood, I'm sorry.
So that would be a reclaiming day of, uh, process that, uh, that you could do anytime soon.
Okay, okay. Would it make sense to do it sooner, to piggyback on one of these contractors that's here, to save mobilization costs and things?
That's what I'm planning to do, is, is once we get to, uh, you know, closer to the end of the, of the, the projects, make sure we have the front veil, and then make a, a change of, what do you call it?
When would you anticipate that debate, just if a resident Maiden were to ask?
Um, I don't know, I just, that's a progress decision making would be done by.
Okay. Okay, any other questions, comments for Jim? No, Len, you're good? Okay, thanks, Jim. Okay, item number 11, discussion, take possible action regarding potential damage reimbursement for Vincent Meliciano. At the last meeting, we started to discuss Mr. Meliciano's claim. Rory went back and included the pictures, so everybody should have those. They are not the best pictures, they are not very clear, but Mr. Meliciano did provide all of the information that is necessary and required of us. So, the issue at hand is, does this board want to reimburse him $269.07 for repair of, uh, his rim?
Do we have all that?
Should all be?
You got it all at the last meeting?
We had it at the last meeting.
Yep.
But this is the new.
Yeah.
Fifty-six dollars.
Fifty-six, yeah.
That's the spin balance, and then.
The other ones we got at the last meeting.
Correct.
Right.
The flux capacitor is not in hand.
Okay, thank you.
What's the total?
The total is $269.07.
And, excuse me, but do we know where these are, the road, the damage?
Uh, yes, there should be a police report.
Bungee. Cause I remember that from, um, from, from last.
Yeah, West churches.
Yeah.
I move, I move that we pay it.
Okay. It is now. Okay, so a motion was made by Karen and seconded by Len to pay Mr. Meliciano $269.07 as requested. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Rory, please let Mr. Meliciano know tomorrow, as regards to that. Item number 12, discussion, take possible action regarding recommendations from ordinance committee regarding, A, the fire department membership, B, delinquent taxpayers, C, sidewalk liability, and D, veterans tax exemption. Okay, so as we know, we had, uh, the, these came to the board, the board then kicked it to the ordinance committee, ordinance committee did some review, we had public hearing, went back to the ordinance committee, it was discussed by myself, Karen, and Nicole. We are all in agreeance with all the ordinances as they were presented to the people. The only difference that the three of us have is that we would like to see the veterans tax exemption do as much as it possibly can within the law. So Rich, if, what we'd like to do, if you're comfortable with this, we'd like to at least put this initial ordinance on the books, and look to see if there's anything we can do to expand it, or make it better for our folks. I think so too. But we more just wanted to kind of put it on the record then.
Periodically.
Right. Okay. So, Rich, if you could, just for the boards, understand, if you can walk us through what kind of the next steps would be, and then we'll go from there.
Under 7.5 of the town charter, there has to be a public hearing, public hearing, um, must be held at least five full calendar days that's involved, and there must be notice of the time and place of the hearing given, have these ten days in advance by publication newspaper, having substantial situation in town. So if you, and think about that, it might make sense if Rory can get this, if he were to put in this paper, with the, with the, um, he's supposed to public hearing the night of the next meeting. If he, if he gets the ten days, the ten days in advance.
July 7th.
Yeah, if he can do that for the July 7th, be a public hearing, and all of the time, and then vote the next meeting. Or not the next meeting, because, um.
That'll be July 21st.
Yeah. That would, that would fit the second form of 7.25. The ordinances should be filed with town and district office, and then, uh, after passage, uh, um, they have to be published for, again, they'll be a press about the time.
Okay. Okay.
That, that should work, uh, if you, if you public hearing, it won't happen.
Okay. Is everybody comfortable with that time frame? Okay, then, at this point, I will entertain a motion to add to the agenda, do I need to do that? I need to add to the agenda to set the special public hearing, or just to set the public hearing?
You might as well.
All right, I'd like to add to the agenda, discussion and possible action regarding establishment of a public hearing to discuss the ordinances for fire department membership, delinquent taxpayers, sidewalk liability, and veterans tax exemption to be held on Tuesday, July 7th, at 6:30 in the Norma Drummer Room, Seymour Town Hall.
So moved.
Motion by Karen, second by Ann Marie, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. I'd like to set a public hearing for the ordinances, ordinance changes for the fire department membership, delinquent taxpayers, sidewalk liability, and veterans tax exemption to be held on July 7th, 2015, at 6:30 PM in the Norma Drummer Room of Seymour Town Hall. Motion by Ann Marie, second by Nicole, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Now, does this board, now that we've set the public hearing, does this board need to take action to move them to public hearing, or no?
No, I, I think, the motion needs to say.
Covers that?
Covers that, and you need to put those four down, the public hearing, not July 7th.
Okay. Okay, all right, perfect. All right, so before we close, is anything anyone wants to add on those four? I think we're all, we're all in agreeance on everything, but, okay. All right, excellent. Okay, item number 13, discussion, discussion, take possible action regarding ordinance revisions. We have six. We have six ordinance revisions that have come up over the last, uh, couple of weeks, which I wanted to clear the first four we were working on and then start to take a look at these next six. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to give you a, a quick summary and ask that you forward these to the ordinance committee for review and a report back to the board. So the first one is on adult businesses. Uh, it's to review the town's ordinances controlling the establishment and regulating the activities of adult-oriented businesses to ensure that they are stringent, stringent enough, stringent, excuse me, stringent enough. Uh, blight, to review the blight ordinance after a year and a half since it's revamping, to reassess its effectiveness. Driveway inspections, to review, uh, the effective way to reassign driveway inspections and the issuance of driveway permits. Fire hydrant snow removal, to investigate creating an ordinance to make it mandatory for able-bodied residents to remove the snow from fire hydrants on their property. Uh, noise, to reexamine the town's noise ordinance to see if any changes can be made to make it more easily enforceable and more effective. And then finally, storm water management, to reassign the responsibility of, for storm water runoff inspections and to avoid duplication of efforts by the Inland Wetlands Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission. So those are the six ordinances. Um, some were recommended by our enforcement officers, uh, some by the fire department, um, and then some by members of our ordinance committee. So are there any comments anyone would like to make?
Um, the storm water management is, um, you might want to get, you guys got to look at the, understand that the DEEP and the EPA just passed WOTUS, almost like WOTUS, President of the United States. It's the Water of the United States. Whereas a puddle is now considered a wa, a weed, or something, or something to get into a waterway. So if someone has an oil release and it gets into a puddle, the puddle can get into a storm drain, the storm drain can get into a stream, the stream can get into a lake, lake. It's, it's a really heavy, heavy enforcement coming on by the EPA, the DEEP. So whatever you guys do on that, make sure you look at the WOTUS regulations and you have somebody who is familiar with that.
Okay. Rich, you have someone in your office that's familiar with WOTUS regulations?
Well, I, we're familiar with the, uh...
WOTUS.
Yeah, WOTUS.
Uh, we could be familiar with WOTUS, so don't take much time.
Okay.
Uh, the, the ordinance that the president brought in, uh, was modeled, there was a state model put up in two thousand and four, and thereafter, communities have opted. Um, the, I screwed, who we, the, 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 you have, the enforcement of the ordinance likely, uh, as to which municipal agency, the, the enforcement arm, the minister of storm water, this guy, this guy. So every community, and the fact that I did, uh, I think we first looked at this within the administration sometime in January, and every community that, that, the community go a little by time, New Town, Director of Public Works, Doug, the county engineer, Beacon Falls, Inland Wetlands Water Commission, Durham, the first election in constational town, the mayor, Weathersfield, Director of Public Works, the county engineer, Rotten, Department of Public Works, Forrester, the city engineer, Blossom Area, the county engineer, you milked it, excuse me, you milked the weapons, planning, zoning, engineering, all have pieces of their ordinance, believe it or not, and prospect is the same, along with the town council and, yes, the storm water unit. So it's all based upon, believe it or not, a model ordinance put up by the Connecticut District, the two thousand and four Connecticut Stormwater Quality Committee. So it's, it's worth thinking of ever looked at. Uh, you, you're a very clever, uh, closely tracked the original model ordinance. You can skip the, uh, within the administration, I think it looks. There is no right answer to that. You may look at the new one, see if that has any impact. Well, it probably doesn't have any impact on this one.
Karen?
Um, with regard to the, uh, adult business?
I thought you never asked. So, um...
I was gonna, I was gonna, I asked for a copy.
Asked for a copy, and I said it was going to be a little heavy. Uh, and so I will pass out to all of you, the, it says proposal ordinance. It has since been adopted. I don't think it's, it's, when your neighbor is being answered. And you'll see it's, uh...
Hmm?
Rory mentioned it was quite long.
We do, but...
Yes, it's quite long. Yeah.
This is, or, um, answering expands it, changes the...
Maybe.
Wow. The one adult entertainment place is Pier Thirty-four, but it's not open.
Where? Is that the gas station?
Town Route Thirty-four. Yeah, yes. Diagonal from the...
By the gas station?
Diagonal from the Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah.
I, I was...
Yes.
What?
At least that's what I've heard is where it is.
That's what you've heard, yes. Of course, we heard it.
Paul told me, so.
Would an ordinance like this prevent a previously established business that has since closed from reopening its doors? Or has, is there some kind of a zoning exemption?
I could answer that in a hypothetical way, maybe.
Would we have to structure it differently?
Um, I don't know where it is. In other words, you have to look at the, um, the areas and look at the regulations and look for where they're covered in, um... Maybe. Well, it certainly isn't easy to decide.
And maybe this is more for the proponents of the ordinance. Is this, is the intent of this to make it more stringent than it currently is? Is that the, I'm assuming that's the intent?
I would assume, yes.
My intent in even suggesting this, and it's not an original idea, obviously, I borrowed this from me and Sonya, is to protect the kids.
Sure. Okay. That just clarifies it so that it's, it's, you never know.
I think, you know, it's sort of a large, it's a grappling, you know, so you need to all take it, you know.
Right. Yeah. I mean, Len brings up a good point. We have the one place, the former Pier Thirty-four. Now, while the bar itself may be closed, if the license is still active, how would we take that into account? And I'm not sure if it is. I know it's been for sale for years and years and years, but...
The license is probably a large...
But if in some way they kept it up, paid the fee, what have you, and it might be something we need to look into just to... Be on the same side? And not that this ordinance targets them, but...
So basically, this is to stop any, the ordinance is...
Stop, you regulate.
Right.
All right. This is to regulate any new businesses that may want to come in and where they are allowed to go.
Correct. Correct.
That's my intent.
Correct.
To regulate. Well, I, I said to Rory today, I sort of took a walk down Main Street, and as far as I can see, there's only one vacant building that somebody could put across from the post office, and that doesn't fall within a school...
I might be able to make the argument that it's close enough to the community center.
Okay.
Maybe a short walk from lunch, though.
Need to go to the post office.
That's right. Rory going to get the mail again. Um, yeah, no, no, your points won't, I'm kidding, you said, your points won't take, yeah. I, I don't think anybody disagrees with, well, let me speak for myself, with regulating this a little bit more tightly. So I don't think, again, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I don't have a problem with that.
Well, I asked Rory if he remembered Jay East, cause I do.
No?
He wasn't even born.
No. I mean, I remember, but I was just a...
I don't.
I was just a child.
And I'm just a baby.
So. Um, and then with regards to the blight, I, I, I put this in there after about a year and a half or so, uh, two years. Just want us all to sit down, take a look at it again, see what we like, what we don't.
Okay.
Uh, make sure we're headed in the right direction if we want to fine-tune it or tweak it a little bit. I know we all have some small issues here and there with it, so now would be a good opportunity to just kind of go through and review that, so.
Uh, Kurt, if I might, um, you were talking about the community center. If you include parks, you've got...
The skate park.
Or, or skate park. We've got Fall Park too, which is even closer.
Doesn't say a thousand feet.
Yep.
Doesn't say a thousand feet on here somewhere.
Yeah, so there you go. Okay. All right, there's no other questions or comments? We'll move on to item number fourteen, which is discussion, take possible action regarding the capital plan. The last meeting, I presented to you the projected long-term capital plan for fiscal year two thousand and sixteen. Wanted you to take a re, uh, take some time to review it and then ask for your approval at this meeting. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, long-term capital plan for two thou, for budget year two thousand and sixteen as presented. Motion by Len. Seconded by Anne Marie. Under discussions, anybody have any questions, comments? Anyone like me to go back through? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes six-zero. Rory, could you forward a copy of this to, uh, the Board of Finance and to the Finance Department as well? And then make sure we have the most updated version online on the website. Okay, item number fifteen, there is no executive session. Item number sixteen, appointments, we have just a few. Lee Heller, catchment area five, it's a reappointment. It's a two-year term, and the expiration date is six, seven, two thousand and seventeen. So that's a little bit of a typo. Okay, have a motion?
Some.
Motion by Nicole, seconded by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The chair votes aye, motion passes six-zero. Jay Colley, planning and zoning alternate. It's an appointment. His term is until the upcoming election. Have a motion?
Some.
Motion by Nicole, seconded by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes six-zero. Alex Dankas, zoning board of appeals. It's a new appointment. It's a four-year term. It expires June sixth, two thousand and nineteen. Have a motion?
Some.
Motion by Len, seconded by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The chair votes aye, motion passes six-zero. Next item on the agenda, item number seventeen, Nicole.
Oh, sorry. Let's see, I have it here. Um, I'm reading to the...
June eleventh?
The following overpayments of tax payments in total of twenty-six dollars and eighty-five cents need to be approved for refund in accordance with the provisions of section twelve dash one-two-nine of the Connecticut General Statutes dated the eleventh day of June two thousand and fifteen, Dana Flack Tax Office.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay, can I have a motion to accept the tax collector's report as presented?
Some.
Motion by Nicole, seconded by Anne Marie. Under discussion, just take a look at the names. Okay, hearing, no questions or comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The chair votes aye, motion passes six-zero. Next item on the agenda is item eighteen, transfers. We have it on tonight. Item number nineteen, correspondence. We have a few correspondents. We have the check register. And we have a letter, uh, to myself from the Inland Wetlands Enforcement Officer. Said at a special meeting, the Seymour Inland Wetlands Commission on June eighth, two thousand and fifteen, the commission granted a wetlands permit for regulated activities at Two Botched Road, Seymour High School. The commission also approved the storm water management plan for the same address. The wetlands permit will expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, subject to removal, renewal, excuse me. Sincerely yours, Peter Giuzzini. We have a letter to the town clerk, um, from Mr. Giuzzini, uh, resigning his position as inland wetland enforcement officer effective June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. Um, Rich, a question, and this goes to Mr. Brennan's comment earlier on. If his, if his position is resigning as of June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, he should continue to work through June thirtieth of two thousand and fifteen. So if that is the case, and he is choosing not to work, does he need to be compensated?
Well, if he's not working, I wouldn't compensate.
Okay.
That's, that's what's bothering me. I mean, if somebody grabbed something up, you wouldn't, you know?
Mm-hmm.
I would not compensate, so.
Okay.
Mr. Giuzzini, uh, did that be an error in his part? He was removed thirty today?
That, that was my understanding, that's what I said.
But he was, he was basically left the building in the town.
So shouldn't his an appointment?
So we're talking to you. I don't think he appointed acting.
Okay, I can do that. Do I need board of stock on approval to appoint and acting? Well, I'm not sure if he... And we don't meet again until July seventh?
So you're after that date anyway?
Correct. But in absence of an inland wetland enforcement officer, is there a reason we could not use Larry Seacor from NAFIS and Young?
No, there's no one.
Okay. As we would as a backup to our inland wetlands enforcement officer anyway. So in the short term, I mean, we do have, uh, some people very interested, and we'll be lining them up for the appropriate training that they need to have.
When you charge, basically, it would be an administrative appointment. The reason I say acting, I mean, administrative appointments have to be agreed by the board of selection if it's regarded, um...
Do we need to appoint Larry, or can we just, because NAFIS and Young is the town engineer and Larry handles?
I, I would have a...
So that's okay.
I have the town engineer, so the town going close to term expired.
Okay. Okay. Rory, could you?
Unless there's an emergency, you know, from wetland.
Right.
Your run-of-the-mill, let me finish it like this. Your run-of-the-mill things like plan review and matters like that, the processing for inland wetlands, I mean, the town engineer can have wet, uh, cost.
Right.
You know, the issue you would have is there was some sort of a crisis that required the inland wetland officer to issue, and we would cease and desist, and then...
We couldn't empower Larry to do that?
I think for those purposes, I would appoint him to do that.
Okay. So we can just do that now if we wanted to? Because we've, we've already gone through appointments, do we need to add it to the agenda, or can we just?
I would add it to the agenda. I move that we add this to the agenda.
Second, second.
Okay, motion by Len, seconded by Karen. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The chair votes aye, motion passes six-zero. I'd like to entertain a motion to appoint Larry Seacor of NAFIS and Young, the town's engineer, to handle any potential inland wetland enforcement officer duties in an acting capacity until a new permanent officer can be appointed. Motion by Nicole, seconded by Anne Marie. Is that you?
Yeah, those mean.
Yes.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The chair votes aye, motion passes six-zero. Rory, could you reach out to Mr. Giuzzini and see what his intentions are? And that appointment will, until we bring the new officer onboard. Okay, perfect. Um, also, there is a letter, uh, to myself, uh, from Paul Sponheimer, Jr., resigning his position from the Seymour High School Athletic Field Committee and the Downtown Committee effective immediately. With that being said, there is an alternate on the turf committee. Can that board just promote their alternate, or does this board need to do that?
Well, that board could use their alternate. The alternate would only appoint five of its board?
Yes. And they can make them a full member?
Not a full member. The alternate would be sitting because of the... If you want to make that person a full member, you can...
Okay, I'd like to add to the agenda, um, discussion, possible action to add Paul Roy as a permanent member to the Seymour High School Athletic Field Committee.
Some move.
Motion by Nicole, seconded by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
Abstained.
Chair votes aye, motion passes five-zero-one, and please note Paul's abstention. At this point, I'd like to ask for a motion to appoint Paul Roy as an acting member of the Seymour High School Athletic Field Committee effective immediately.
Some move.
Motion by Nicole, seconded by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
Abstained.
Chair votes aye, motion passes five-zero-one, and please note Paul's abstention. Chair votes aye, motion passes five-zero-one, and please note Paul's abstention. Perfect, okay. That closes correspondence, that was the longest correspondence and the most votes we've ever had.
If, uh, anyone knows of an alternate person, it's always good to have one, because I've...
We do.
I've said...
Yeah, yeah, we had somebody in mind, yep.
I've said it in every meeting.
I know, and that's exactly what I said, so thank you. Yes.
Just about, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, item number twenty, public comment, is there any public comment? Come on, don't you?
James, Friday, one twenty-four, Boney Road. You know, public comments, one question just to lay out there. The way things used to work on, uh, the agenda and stuff for inland wetlands, would you agree with, uh, Peter, where his office hours, your request or whatever, applications, whatever it might be? Uh, I don't believe town engineer adds office hours in town hall. Perhaps, you know, something in terms of how we get information. I was talking with Jim, he was getting applications for your commission this month also. So, would you use it with Bob Looker? He would forward it to, you know, it's just public comments, but an answer would love something considered.
I'll make, during Selectmen's comment, Jamie, I'll... Okay, is there any other public comment? Hearing no other public comments, Selectmen's comments, Karen?
Um, it came to my attention, I got a couple of phone calls regarding litter at the fish bypass at the Pollock Park.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, pet, pet litter.
Pet litter? Okay.
But...
Yep. They just need to say no more.
The two most important calls I got were about cigarettes.
Okay.
So, I, I understand the problem is enforcement, I understand that. I mean, the police have enough to do, but can we at least look into putting signs up telling people they can't let their dogs go?
Um...
There is a sign there for pets.
I believe there is one.
Okay, I didn't...
But, but the bigger issue of that is, uh, starting July first, we'll have a person in place who will be responsible for the maintenance of the park. So, they'll be there every day picking things up, staying on top of garbage and things like that. Public Works is trying to do that now, but it's, with so many things going on, it's not being successful. But, in that seasonal employee that we had talked about, that's going to be one of their charges. We have, uh, a person in mind, actually, Tom Amy, is going to take that position. Um, so he'll be handling the maintenance and the upkeep of that park on a daily basis.
Okay. I just thought you should know, I've got a couple of phone calls about it. And people are upset at the litter that's at the park.
I'm concerned about the side hill, too, because if you don't stay on top of that hill, it'll get weedy and crazy, so, yeah. Then, that'll start at July first, he's ready to go.
Okay. That's it.
Okay. Paul?
Again, you know, to further what Karen was saying about the cigarette butts and stuff, and I mentioned it at last meeting, um, and I know our ordinance committee's doing a lot of things, but I think we ought to consider an ordinance to make all our parks smoke-free.
Me, too.
I think a number of communities do have that ordinance, and I think we ought to do it as well. You know, we have kids playing at these parks and stuff, and, uh, it just, it's not a, a good thing to have butts and stuff all over our place, so, uh, I think that that's necessary.
Is that something we can forward to the ordinance committee as a part of the package? Or do we need to take action if that's something the board wants to do? Or can the ordinance committee just review it and bring recommendations back to the full board? Okay.
Yeah, check into what other communities have, yeah, that would be a good idea.
Okay.
Second of all, uh, and I'm sure everybody's aware of this, this, uh, survey that Channel Three put out and put us in the bottom ten communities in the, in the state of Connecticut. I find it hard to believe, I find it hard to believe some of the statistics that they put out. First of all, one of the things that was said in it that they, they considered two hundred and sixty-eight municipalities, and there's only a hundred and sixty-nine in Connecticut.
Right.
Uh, and that one in three, uh, homes in the town are vacant, that's...
Correct.
Very hard to believe, so, um, I think that's something that, I don't know if we need to make a statement, it's, it's kind of a weird thing that they put out right there like that, but I think we need to stick up for our community because, uh, we're certainly not in the bottom ten.
Yeah, you know, and I'd be hard-pressed to see some of those towns that are somehow in front of us if they're in the same financial condition as us. You know, I would rather we talk about the tried and true things that they rank communities with, and this is, um, a hokey little survey that it could have been from who knows what.
Yeah, I don't know who came up with it, I really don't, but...
Proper stats, and I, I mean, I saw it on, um, Facebook and looked at it, and it's not even...
You, you really can't tell the source of it.
No. That's why, I mean, I, you know, unless it's...
That's why it, it really floored me that Channel Three would have even put it out there.
Yeah, I mean, unless this board would like me to make some type of statement or put something out, I would prefer not to respond to something as ridiculous as, as that. I mean, anybody can see, if you want to say Bridgeport's a better town than Seymour? Come, you know? So...
Okay, and the third, last thing I wanted to ask about or talk about was, um, the, the signs that we have up, uh, around town for getting to different points in the town.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think they're, they're very good. What is the criteria for something to be added to those signs?
What do you mean?
Well, um, some of my, my wife's friends and my friends out of the Historical Society wanted to know if they could have the Seymour Historical Society added to that, to the bottom of the sign up by the Russian Corp.
Mm-hmm.
Um, evidently, they talked with the zoning enforcement officers, who said because they are a nonprofit, they can't be on the sign. I don't know if that's true or not, I just, I just wanted to bring it up. I thought the Historical Society would be a good thing to have on a sign like that to point to, you know?
Well, at this point, if they wanted it added, it would be a brand-new sign.
Well, I think, I mean, they, they're...
Well, what they approached us on as well were signs, and Rory, correct me if I'm wrong, because I know they talk to you more, but, um, signs leading people, and they just wanted to put them in different spots on the streets and things. And that, we told them, you just can't do.
No, I understand that.
Right.
I think they understand that, too. Is there any way to add to the signs that are there? Can they be, are they made so that something additional would be added to those?
No. No. So, we would, we would need to add a, we would need to come up with a brand-new sign?
Mm-hmm. I know they were...
We, when I talked to them, we also mentioned that around town, it's seen a bit of a sign on traffic signs for churches and that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there is.
I spoke to the chief already, and he said that there was no problem with that.
There is what?
But there's no problem with that. They told us that, you know, to put directionless sign on traffic signs.
The chief has no problem with that?
The state is no exception.
Oh, yeah, I understand that.
But as the traffic's going to the town, uh, for example, at the bottom of the church or whatever.
Okay, so that's a possibility, because I know that they're prepared to pay for a sign to be put up wherever...
But they still need to come in and have the signs approved by us?
Yes, I understand that, yeah.
I just want to make that clear, they can't tomorrow and start whacking signs on boats.
Some of the members wanted to come tonight, but the person who was going to be a spokesperson couldn't make it, so, I just thought I'd bring it up and try and get them some good information back.
Yes, so if they have an idea on signs, if they want to bring them in to, to Rory, that wouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
But again, the signs need to be with the theme that we've already established.
Right.
So, we don't have signs all over town, just so we can keep some control.
Very good.
Okay. Nicole? Anne Marie?
Um, I'll say.
Len?
Uh, yeah, just to, just to kind of wrap up or, or point to something that we're doing proactively that I'd love, actually, a progress report on, but, um, I'm sure the rest of the board would as well, but, you know, our, our town may have come in poorly in that, oh, I won't even call it a poll, whatever that thing was. Um, but we are addressing it proactively, and I know the, the neighborhood sweeps program in particular, you've been, you've been talking about it. I know there was something in the valley, you knew the other day about it. And I'd love to find out, you know, how, uh, how we're progressing with regard to, particularly with litter.
Mm-hmm.
Because that's the easiest thing to get rid of.
Yep.
So, I don't want to comment to it or not, but...
No, the litter, uh, was noted on a lot of the streets. With the seasonal help coming on board, and we should, we expect to have them, uh, within the next two weeks, that's going to be a priority for them to start getting around. The problem that we have is there's a lot of problems.
Yes.
And going through and prioritizing them is, is the challenge. Um, you know, our main focus has been on the roads at this point, um, and because of manpower, the, the litter itself has been tough to, to keep up, but bringing the three extra seasonal help folks on will directly help that. I would like to start sending light-duty employees out to pick up garbage, but that's the response that I get from Rich and Warren when I say that. Um, so, but, you know, it's, it's something that is a priority, and we are trying to get as much manpower as we can on it. Um, you know, the Seymour sweeps report, um, is still in the works. Dawn is continuing to compile it. It's a giant Excel spreadsheet with pivot tables, so you can do dropdowns and things like that. Once all of the information is compiled and organized, once we go through everything with Jim and we make final choices with any extra money on, uh, roads in category C, what we're going to do is recreate a new road plan listing out A, B, and C, and we'll put all that together. So, we'll organize all that, we'll have one as well on sidewalks, so we can have the next, I believe we have seven or eight phases already in the books, uh, but we'll add another four or five phases to that. But, you know, people want sidewalks, but we need to put sidewalks in strategic places where folks can walk to downtown, to our TOD district and things like that, so, um, you know, that's going to take some time and, and some work, but we're heading in that direction. It is a push of the Ten Year Strategic Planning Committee. Um, they're on top of me every quarter about that, so we'll have more information in the coming months on that.
If I may, I forgot something.
No, sorry, your turn, pass, Karen.
Weren't we supposed to receive a calendar tonight from the Senior Citizen Center about newer activities?
Uh...
We talked about it at the last meeting.
If we were, um, I forgot, so I apologize for that, but we can get you one, it's not a problem. Actually, we had Mary and, uh, Missy in last week to discuss, uh, a new newsletter from the Community Service Department.
In a webpage?
No, more than a webpage.
Oh.
Um, we want to have something that we actually send out to the residents, so it'll be a little bit more proactive. We initially had talked about using the Code Red system. Uh, we now have the unlimited Code Red plan, so we can make as many phone calls as we want. Come to find out, we made too many phone calls this past year, and they hit us with an extra bill. Um, so, we just purchased the unlimited plan. Um, you know, I wanted to do a weekly call to residents, giving them updates on activities and things that was going on. Rory informed me that, uh, that would probably turn a lot of people off, and they would, they would tune me out. So, we started talking and looking at some other ways, and we're going to use the functionality of our, not only our website, the new one, but also the new, uh, My Rec Ware that the Community Service Department's going to have, which will capture emails. We'll start sending electronic copies of this newsletter out, and then paper copies as well.
I got a Code Red call today.
That was a, a system test, which were, I don't know, I don't think is what we expected it to be.
Well, what it said to me was, I'm not signed up for Code Red, I am signed up.
Yeah, that's, it's not what Rory and Dee got.
Yeah.
Tons of calls.
And, and the woman, I don't know who was the narrator of the phone call, but you could barely understand her.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it was, uh, the... Yeah. So, that was not us. So. Um, anything else?